I'd like to call this meeting into order. Lonnie, would you deliver the invocation, please?
Lord, thank you for the opportunity to gather together. I want to thank you for the break and the rains and the dry weather. Lord, we just ask you to watch over the city, mayor, and council as they conduct business. Lord, we just ask you to be blessed in favor of your name. Amen.
Ann?
Please, some blood, please.
I do pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and limited to its throne.
Before we adopt the agenda to have our swearing-in ceremony with mayor and council, Bill, would you?
Tony Fountain. If you'll raise your right hand, let's check on the Bible and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform...
I do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform...
...duties of councilman of the city of Jasper.
Duties of councilman of the city of Jasper.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia.
As well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America. I'd like to call this meeting into order. Lonnie, would you deliver the invocation, please?
Lord, thank you for the opportunity to gather together. I want to thank you for the break and the rains and the dry weather. Lord, we just ask you to watch over the city, mayor, and council as they conduct business. Lord, we just ask you to be blessed in favor of your name. Amen.
Ann?
Please, some blood, please.
I do pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and limited to its throne.
Before we adopt the agenda to have our swearing-in ceremony with mayor and council, Bill, would you?
Tony Fountain. If you'll raise your right hand, let's check on the Bible and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform...
I do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform...
...duties of councilman of the city of Jasper.
Duties of councilman of the city of Jasper.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia.
As well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. If you would, sign your own, please, sir. Do you want to take pictures individually?
We will have a photo session just in a moment.
Dr. Faust?
If you would, people with cameras, take photos while they're being sworn in. We'll have them there.
If you'll be celebrating your right hand, let's check on the Bible. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will well and truly perform...
I will well and truly perform...
...the duties of councilman...
The duties of councilman.
...of the city of Jasper.
Of the city of Jasper.
And that I will support...
That I will support.
...and defend...
And defend.
...the charter thereof.
The charter thereof.
As well as the constitution...
As well as the constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations. If you will, please, sir, raise your right hand, place your left hand on the Bible. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will well and truly...
That I will well and truly...
...perform the duties of councilman...
Perform the duties of councilman.
...of the city of Jasper.
Of the city of Jasper.
And that I will support and defend...
And I will support and defend.
...the charter thereof.
The charter thereof.
As well as the constitution...
As well as the constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. If you'll raise your right hand, place your left hand on the Bible. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will well and truly...
That I will well and truly...
...perform the duties of mayor...
Perform the duties of mayor.
...of the city of Jasper.
Of the city of Jasper.
And that I will support and defend...
And that I will support and defend.
...the charter thereof.
The charter thereof.
As well as the constitution...
As well as the constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, yes, I'd like to go ahead and get photos now if we could. That'd be another way. Council, we'll go, all the newly-elected officials go forward and, or the re-elected officials go forward, and then we'll have the entire council. Please, the ladies out.
It's not going to be, it's not going to be a real pretty picture. We'll do our best. Good luck with that film, yeah.
Bill, join him.
Allison's turn.
We're going to do, this is the people who were just sworn in.
Oh, okay, so we're going to...
Okay, and when the full council come forward, then we'll have the full.
I'm playing.
You missed us.
We're going to have to...
I guess it'll be 2016. Could be a calendar. Thank you.
With the formality out of the way, would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Have a motion to approve by Ann.
Second.
Allison, excuse me, and seconded by Ann. Any discussion? Being in all favor, by show of hand? Thank you. The minutes of December 15, 2015 meeting.
On the first day of the regular council meeting was held on Monday, December 7, 2015. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order at 6:00 P.M. He requested Councilmember Jim Looney give the invocation. Councilmember Tony Fountain led in a recital with the Fledge of Allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to approve the agenda, and Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver stated that Councilmembers Anson Navy and Allison Boyle were absent from the meeting for personal reasons. City Clerk Lisa Boyle read the minutes of the November 9, 2015, regular meeting. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. City Clerk Lisa Boyle read the minutes of the November 16, 2015, public hearing. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. City Clerk Lisa Boyle read the minutes of the November 23, 2015, called meeting. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. There was no old business to discuss. Item A of the new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Joe Walker with Point North Insurance to discuss her upcoming liability workers' compensation insurance renewals. Mr. Walker stated that the city's current liability insurance company, Black Filters, annual premium remains the same except for increases for property additions and increases in property values of the city. He stated that the increase in liability insurance was approximately $7,000 over 2015's cost. He suggested the city add a $1 million commercial umbrella insurance, commercial umbrella coverage as well, which would be an additional cost of approximately $13,000. Mr. Walker stated that he had looked at four other insurance companies for the city liability insurance and Black Filter. The current carrier was the recommended carrier. Mr. Walker stated that our workers' compensation insurance with Bitco Insurance Company went down over the prior year approximately $1,100. Following discussion of the coverages, Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to accept the quotes presented with the addition of the commercial umbrella coverage. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to accept Point North Insurance plans with the commercial insurance addition. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item B of the new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Amy Lee, Jack Dunn, Jerry Nettital of the Downtown Alliance to present to council their recommendation for a traffic enhancement study. They asked that council approve Kenley Horn at a cost of $48,750 to the city to do the study. Discussion followed concerning how they had decided on this particular firm. Following discussion, Mayor Weaver stated that the study would be paid from SPOLOST funds. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to accept the recommendation of the Downtown Alliance for Kenley Horn to perform the traffic enhancement study. Councilmember Jim Looney made such motion. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item C of the new business, Lisa Boyle presented to council a resolution to submit an application for funding from the Georgia DNR Recreational Trails Fund. Mayor Weaver stated that if approved, the city would receive a $105 grant and would be required to match 20 percent of the funding. Following discussion by council, Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. The city accepted the resolution for the grant application, and 20 percent matched by the city. Councilmember Tony Fountain made such motion, and Councilmember Jim Looney seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item D of the new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Sonny Underwood to present to council additional 2016 alcohol license renewal applications. See list attached. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to approve a license renewal request, and Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to go into executive session, and Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. The meeting was closed. Councilmember Todd, Councilmember Allison Boyle made a motion to approve the license renewal request, and Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Being no other business to come before council, Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next at the regular council meeting to be held January 6, 2015.
Entertain a motion. Motion to approve the minutes as read.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Being in all favor, by show of hand? Thank you, council. Council, under old business, we have none. Under new business, appointment of city manager. I would like to recognize Mr. Jim Looney.
Counsel, at this time, traditionally, we open the floor to counsel for nominations, for the appointment of city manager. Therefore, open for nominations.
I might, I might most agree to approve Mayor John Weaver as city manager.
Right here, second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, rather than do a by-acclamation, let's have a show of hands. He said it's five to...
C, right.
Five for none against. Give that back to me. You didn't give it to me in the first place. I got it.
Thank you, Jim. With that, we'll move forward with item B, and thank you, council, for your confidence. I will do my best to make you as well as the city proud. Under the next item, item B, we have, at this time, to elect our mayor pro tempore. And I will open the floor for nomination.
I'd like to nominate Jim Looney as mayor pro tempore of the city of Jasper.
A motion to appoint Jim Looney as the mayor pro tempore. I get a second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? But before I do that, I might need to open up any other appointees. Anybody, before I move too fast on this, we're going to give you a acclamation. With that, let me readdress mine. You made a motion. Okay, what I did, that motion would be basically your recommendation for the appointment. Okay. Any other recommendations for appointees? Being none, I would like to ask Mr. Faust to finish his motion by making the recommendation to appoint Mr. Looney by five to one in front of the vote, which, but I can't, I'm not going to way out of line here.
I would like to bring to the vote Jim Looney for the mayor pro tempore.
Very good. Thank you. With that, I have a motion forward to vote in favor of Jim Looney as the mayor pro tempore. Motion is second. Discussion? Being none, all in favor, vote by show of hands. Now, that is going to be four, four, and one at a time. Now, I have screwed that up in the past, but never this bad.
Between the two of us, we're never consistent, I'll say that.
Well, you never can tell. There's no rule that you have to be consistent. Thank you, council, and now that I have gotten the gavel back from Mr. Looney, I fully intend not to miss any meetings. We'll share. Okay, with that, we'll go to item C, review and approval of annual position appointments. With that, before I get to the council's appointees, we have several appointments from the Planning, Zoning, Planning, Zone Board of Appeals, Downtown Development, et cetera. But with that, I'd like to start with the very first one on the list that you may have before you. Our appointee for the Planning and Zoning Commission, whose term is at an end, is Mr. Tim Gorley. And Mr. Tim Gorley has agreed to be reappointed, which I highly recommend. So I would entertain a motion to approve Tim Gorley to take the appointment from 2016 to his term. I think that is a two-year term limit on that, a three-year, three-year term. So would entertain a motion for Mr. Tim Gorley to be the appointee. Got a motion to approve Tim Gorley for Planning and Zoning Commission. I have seconds. That was Jim Looney. Any discussion? Jim Looney made the second. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, vote by show of hand? Thank you, council. That's unanimous. Under Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, I have Ms. Karen Proctor. I would ask the council to consider her for the reappointment for a three-year overlapping term for the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. Again, the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals has probably met less than three times over the last 15 years. But they are very important in case we need them. So Ms. Proctor has served well in the past and would expect to do so in the future. So would entertain a motion.
Will we accept the nomination?
Motion to approve the nomination.
Approve the appointment.
Approve the appointment. Got a motion is second. I think I heard Tony first. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, vote by show of hand? Thank you, council. Downtown Development Authority of the city of Jasper, we have Ms. Martha Poole and Ken Penn. Mr. Ken Penn, you recall, some months back, we appointed Ken to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Maxine Moore. And his, her term, as well as Martha's, would have been up this year. And I would like to ask the council to reappoint both of those positions with the people who fill them now, Martha Poole and Ken Penn. Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, vote by show of hand? Thank you, council. Also, in the Downtown Development Authority, we have these positions to overlap as our city of Jasper tree board. And we have, for whatever reasons, these different people are staggered from their position on the development authority, but this will be Kurt Garner, Mike Denson, and Marty Callahan to serve as, on a four-year overlapping term, as owner of the city's tree board. And they meet when necessary with our development authority. So would entertain a motion. Motion's approved. Kurt Garner, Mike Denson, Marty Callahan on the city tree board? Motion is second. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, vote by show of hands? Thank you, council. Jasper Housing Authority. The Jasper Housing Authority is made up of Vonks Pharo, Don Boggs, Frank U. Banks, Larry Johnson, and Mary Perkins. Larry Johnson's term is up and needs, they need an appointment. Mr. Johnson has agreed to accept this appointment for the next five years. Would entertain a motion?
So moved.
A motion? Motion is second. Discussion? Being none, all in favor, vote by show of hand? Thank you, council. For the council information, I did call Ann Dobson, and we discussed since she, it was her recommendation to me that she would like to have it back. Council, Finance Committee, in the past, we've had Jim Looney and John Faust. I would entertain a motion, or ask for a motion that we reappoint Mr. Jim Looney and John Faust back to the Finance Committee. Motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, vote by show of hand? Thank you, council. Water Committee, Tony Fountain. I have Public Safety, Allison Boyle. Streets, Anson Navy. Parks, John Faust and Anson Navy. And JYSA liaison, John Faust. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the rest of those as a lobby. Got a motion? Motion is second. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, vote by show of hand? Thank you, council. That's the end of item C. Item D, alcohol license renewal. Mr. Underwood? Sonny will, Sonny will tell you that we almost got all of them last year.
One of the licenses that you all approved at our call meeting, they had changed the, he didn't, the gentleman didn't want to sell distilled spirits, he didn't think. And he came back to me when we came back to work on Monday. He said that he would like to have his license back the way it was and to sell distilled spirits, Quavo Grill. And he paid his money, which is $3,000, to have the license changed back to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits. And I just need the action from the council and mayor.
We entertain a motion from the council, from the council for this change of the alcohol license for Quavo Grill. Got a motion to approve the action? Motion is second. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, vote by show of hand? Thank you, council. And thank you, Sonny. Counsel, this came to us, and we thought it would, probably could have been done administratively, but we felt better about the fact that we needed the council's consent. Mayor's report, economic development, Jerry Nettital? Jerry, do you have anything you'd like to say to Chief Love?
Do I?
I know he was talking to you when you left your seat, thank you.
I thought he was talking past me, bear.
Or over your head?
Yeah, I probably said it.
Thank you.
But I'll bring it up when I get back.
I just want to give you the opportunity.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate being with everyone this evening. I have just a few items that I want to share, one of which is an update about the traffic enhancement study. Kenley Horn is in the process of preparing a proposal with the, you know, of course, contractor mouths. I will be presenting that to the mayor and council for approval and signature as soon as I receive it. Following that, we will move rapidly to schedule a preliminary meeting where they will come up, spend a little time with the mayor and some specific other people involved with the Downtown Alliance to gather information in preparation for moving forward with the larger meetings. So that's moving forward very nicely. And again, I would like to thank everyone for your support, all in. I think it would be very important to the community moving forward in 2016. The other thing I want to share with you is that, you know, one of the things that we're working on in economic development is actually developing some tourism venues that will draw people up into the area, and it's very much an economic driver. And one of the first things that we have done and have now completed is to catalog our existing hiking trails and walking areas and post those on our website. Right now, the information is out there, but it's scattered. There's no one area or no one place that a visitor could go to and find all the hiking and walking opportunities. And so that's something that we have now. It's just a matter of packaging it up and putting it out there where the public can find it. And again, I'm pleased to say with the support of the chamber and our new tourism director, Lynn Brandon, that task is being completed. The Talking Rock Nature Preserve, we're the individual that is in charge of that. Trust has talked about building mountain bike trails and some other items. They are moving forward with that. They have reached an agreement with the International Mountain Bicycling Association to fund a conceptual study, a actual mountain bike trail plan on that property, which then, once they have that plan, they can move forward with soliciting grants and other mechanisms to help fund and build the trails. So several things are moving forward very positively. The last thing I wanted to share is that, you know, we're starting out, we never really slowed down towards the end of last year, as typically happens around the holiday season. Today, I received a call yesterday from a movie location scout, and we went out walking around and looking at different sites. Also received a call from a, I'll call it a commercial-type opportunity that we had dealt with previously, that kind of went to the back burner. He called me. He is now in a position to move forward. So again, we're starting out very, very strongly, and I think 2016 is going to be a very positive year for us. So just wanted to share a few things that, you know, that's going on. And, excuse me, I'll conclude my report at this time unless there are some questions that I can answer.
Jerry, the council's going to be reading that in a paper, our meeting that we had Wednesday, or Tuesday, yesterday, so that they won't be shocked when they get this information. Would you give a little update? She's impressed us here anyway. She's already heard this, that they might need it.
Sure. The Port Royal project continues to be out there, you know, it's a private entity. They're working on trying to pull together the funding to bring this project together. But in support of that, from time to time, there's some procedural things that we have to do or that's requested of us. It's not an indicator of the success or non-success of the project, but one of those steps along the way was a request that we, as part of a potential pass-through type bond issued through the development authority, again, they're not general obligation bonds, doesn't impact the taxpayer, it's a very common item. Last year in the state of Georgia, order of magnitude, I think it was like $1.25 billion or something like that, was created through development authorities in support of different... or something like that, was created through Development Authorities in support of different types of projects throughout the state. So one of the procedural items was to have the Development Authority convene, read through some paperwork, and sign it. It was relating to potentially a bond issuance. It did not, they have not approached us for an actual one. It was just procedural and laying the groundwork. And so that was what was conducted, the business that was conducted on Tuesday. So again, I was glad to answer any questions, but, you know, the main point there that I really want everybody to understand is it's procedural, it hasn't obligated us to do anything as it relates to giving anybody money or anything like that. It's also not an indicator of the success or failure of the project, but it does indicate that they continue to work towards trying to bring this to fruition.
Questions on this, council? Thought it was best if they, period, then I'm reading the paper.
Yeah, I agree. I just didn't think about it.
Always thinking about Mr. Looney.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you so much. Getting back?
Yeah. Financial report, Lisa.
In your pocket, you have a financial report for December 2015 and through the year-to-date December. At this point in time, we have a lot of closing entries to make because it's year-end, so it will change from what you're looking at here. But overall, it looks like we're probably going to come in well under budget in the general fund, the government funds. We're right at budget in the water fund, and we'll know more about it when we get our year-end entries posted. Sales tax came in in December for, come up to November, $7,588. That's a little under what it came in the same time last year at $9,750. Overall, year-to-date, $1,047,510 versus $1,037,875 in the prior year.
And that's the local option sales tax, which is 25% of the county's 1%. A little better than 25%. So you can do the math if you don't have the number of them, the swap, which we have 20% versus 25%.
I got what was drawn in, but I didn't bring what our managers give you the cash balance. We just paid a big bill this past month. It's down to what it was last year. We took in $68,469. It's not showing on here because it came in the first of January, but that's what we took in for November for the swap. That's all I have. The auditors have contacted us and given us a list or take, they're coming up with our inventory this week, and we're going to do preliminary work beginning January 21st.
Lisa, may I take liberty with your statement you made me the other day? This is their auction year, and so we've had them three years, and so we need to make sense that our first council meeting, that we can start planning to get ready to do a bid process or proposal for this year. So keep that in mind, and Lisa will keep us informed somewhere around probably May or June even during this, that we'll open this up for bid. We're going to have to have this taken care of quickly because this is a stressful year when we have to do the bid that we change or potentially can change auditors. But this is the time. Contract is up. Thank you, and I didn't mean to surprise you with that, but I just thought of it when you finished that. Any other questions, council? Okay, animal control and other duties assigned.
Mayor and council, as you can see in the list, animal control is, it's under control. I mean, we're just not having many calls right now, and that's a good thing. So no exciting stories to tell like that in the future.
Well, I'm going to tell this one that Chief Lovell gave me, the Chief Lovell, Chief Lovell gave me the other morning, and it happened on a regular basis, that 911 gets a phone call that a dog walked through the parking lot at Walmart.
Yes.
And that's insane, that someone calling reported poor old dog walking through the parking lot. That's how concerned people are evidently with animal control. And of course, Walmart is right on the edge of the City of Jasper, so it's probably a county dog walking in. But anyway, that's quite a humorous statement that we have in the morning when those reports come in like that. And I'll tell Lovell, Chief Lovell, tell you a little bit about the hurdle process being called in the 911. Lonnie, if you will, talk a little bit about our New Year's event and how it went and projections and predictions and whatever.
The New Year's event went off very, very well. We've been getting nothing but compliments. We've had phone calls from people in Bartow County, Gimmer County that has came to it and commented about it. Give everybody a thumbs up. The city staff was at more or less at my disposal. They did a fantastic job. They did everything that needed to be done. The crowd was larger this year. You know, there's no way to give an exact number, but I found out there is an equation so that we can get an estimate, so I'm working on that. It won't be exact, but everything went great, from what I understand. We had no medical emergencies. We had, I guess, Chief Lovell convention bets, as far as I know, no bets for the law enforcement was needed. Everything just went great.
And the city street was totally ready. The city employees were gone by 3:00.
Yes.
So it took all that time. And just for the record, I rode the bull at the end, on the way, before they tore it down, and my neck.
Mayor, Mayor, I'm telling you, you stay off. You did a good job.
My neck is great. But anyway, thank you, Lonnie, and appreciate it, and all the city employees did a great job. Lonnie Collins is in charge of overseeing all of the other responsibilities on that, and thank you.
Good job.
Police report, Chief Lovell?
Good evening, Mayor and council. City of Jasper Police Department, for the month of December, responded to 811 calls served from the 911 center, for a grand total of, I think it might be our all-time highest 2015, just a little side note, 9,911 calls. We'll keep going, brother, we're going to break the old 10 thousand next year. We'll keep going at this pace. We responded to 71 motor vehicle accidents, issued a total of 47 citations for following one DUI, 27 speeding, five shoplifting, 14 miscellaneous traffic violations. Georgia State Patrol issued a total of 100, for a grand total in the city court, 147. Took a total of 31 state warrants for the following, one theft by taking felony, 13 counts of forgery and first degree felony, one theft by taking misdemeanor, five shoplifting. Mister Mayor's two current trespassing Mister Mayor's, one shoplifting felony, one suspicion battery handled violence, one false name and date of birth to police officer Mister Mayor, two obstruction Mister Mayor, two battery Mister Mayor, and one suspicion battery Mister Mayor. Miscellaneous calls answered, 29 long calls, 20 disorderly calls, three direction, six trespassing or ordering, one suspicious activity, 64 suspicious activity, 11 domestic disputes investigated, four burglary.
Chief, questions? Chief Robb?
Good evening, Mayor and council. For the month of December, the city fire department responded to 100 calls. Those were no structural fires inside or outside the city limits, one vehicle fire inside, not outside, no grass or brush fires in or out, 14 motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside, two outside, 43 emergency medical responses inside, 22 outside, 12 other calls in, six out. As always, that same thing we ran, it was not listed above. As of the end of the year, it was 1,315 calls. Fire inspection program looked at two sets of plans for construction renovation and conducted 16 inspections. Also, my year-end report is attached, if you have any questions, it's simply a total of everything I did throughout the year.
Any questions, council? Thank you, Steve. John?
It was a year-end on JYSA. It turned out to be a pretty good year. They had their elections, new officers, we got three new members of the board. Restlin's going well, Joseph Owens is really doing a good job. I mean, it's just, everything's going well. Looking forward to baseball, city, it seemed a little early, but it's time to start looking.
Bruce came by the city the day I was out, calling the board. For the council's effort, we finished, John, I didn't mean to stink it. Closed on the property of Noah Drive. Mr. Pickett made that happen for the city, and estimated donation through the county tax office was about $1.9 million that was given to the City of Jasper. So we got that done about 28, I think, wasn't it?
Was.
So we're running out of time, but it happened, so. But anyway, we, Chief Lovell, I mentioned just a second ago, he was just a second ago, and I started to mention, that I attended the Cockin Rock Town Hall meeting dealing with the DOT proposed changes for Antioch Church Road, and there was many concerns and that they planned to do to Antioch Church Road, which is going to be a major controversy over the next three or four months. Maybe, I think it's a bad idea personally, but we'll let that pan, except I'm not trying to persuade anyone tonight. But that being said, the biggest complaint at that meeting, of course, the City of Jasper has three corners of Antioch Church Road inside the corporate limits of Jasper. And at that meeting, the people that were there concerned about the danger, dangerous intersection, was concerned about speed. So they looked at the mayor's office, of course, Mayor Banks, who is also a fireman for the City of Jasper, was conducting the meeting, but they all looked to the City of Jasper with the police department as to something we can do about the traffic. And so that morning, I came in and I asked Chief Lovell to send his forces to Antioch Church Road, and of course, the controversy is that this is going to happen, that people's going to think the City of Jasper has a speed trap. And of course, we're having this meeting tonight, and I'm making this announcement, and I always say it's not a traffic. We warn you, slow down so we can prevent the fatalities of that intersection. But we do have a plan that we're going to propose to the DOT that could make that intersection work by simply extending 136 down to Antioch Church Road that would drop all the traffic there, that would then warrant the numbers that would provide Cockin Rock with a traffic light at Antioch Church Road. And I love calling Cockin Rock North Jasper. But that being said, just be aware of that taking place. And I had something else, but it was very insignificant, but I wanted to let you know that, so when people start calling complaining that the City of Jasper is trying to create revenue at that particular area, that's not the case. That's a request of about 35 or 40 people at that meeting. With no other business coming from this, council would entertain a motion. Your turn. Thank you. Happy New Year, guys.